I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, delivered to the end of this world.
Sue, roll call.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Here.
You first, swearing in for Sergeant Lauren, Officer Colber.
Tonight we're gonna be swearing in an officer, and Officer Aubrey Colber, and Sergeant Gordy Lauren. Just a few words about these guys. Aubrey's been with us since 2020. She came to us as a part-time officer. She's worked several other places. And over the past two years, we've had a lot of holes in our schedule. And she has been able to fill in a lot of those holes. She, I believe over the past two years, she probably averaged eighteen hundred hours as a part-time employee for us. Filling holes were like, well, Officer Diaz had to go away, and other spots in the schedule, people got hurt, had to come in. We always could call Aubrey and say, hey, can you work today? And she'd always say yes. So that's part of the reason why she's getting promoted from part-time to full-time tonight. Gordy Lauren here has been with the department since 2009.
Correct.
Gordy's been detective for the past several years. He has done all kinds of stuff with the department with training, with records, and other things. He just recently graduated. I can't remember the school he graduated from, but it was a leadership school. Did very well there. And since we had an open spot on our roster now because of the sergeant position, it was decided to be promoted to sergeant for now, patrol officer, so. I'd like to swear them out. She does the swearing, I just observe.
All right, well, do you first?
All right.
Okay. Please raise your right hand or your hand to me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform
And that I will faithfully perform
The duties of the Office of Full-Time Police Officer
The duties of the Office of Full-Time Police Officer
In and for the City of Lowell
In and for the City of Lowell.
County of Kent
County of Kent.
The State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. All right. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform
And that I will faithfully, faithfully perform
The duties of the Office of Sergeant
The duties of the Office of Sergeant.
In and for the City of Lowell
In and for the City of Lowell.
County of Kent
County of Kent.
State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
One last thing we're gonna do here tonight, something that I learned from the school that I went to was called the Alt of Honor. So we're gonna swear these guys in at this, and then we'll be done. I promise I'm honored.
I promise I'm honored.
So I can hear you. I will not betray my badge
I will not betray my badge.
My integrity
My integrity.
My character
My character.
Or the public trust
Or the public trust.
I will always strive
I will always strive.
To have the courage to hold myself
To have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable
And others accountable.
For our actions
For our actions.
I will uphold the office
I will uphold the office.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the laws and ordinances
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the community I serve
Of the community I serve.
Congratulations.
All right, before we do the consent agenda, I'd like to add, under new business item C, a proclamation for the upcoming Municipal Clerks Week, which I have right here. Now with that change, are there any other changes? Motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Public comment?
Good evening. Perry Beachham resided at 924 Riverside Drive. This weekend, riding around town, I saw a tree that had fallen across the trails. And I had texted Mike Burns saying that he might, because it was still, it wasn't down flat on the ground, it was still partially suspended. Thought that it could cause injury, so I texted him, told him about it, and this was Saturday, and I don't know, Sunday I had to go to Meyer and went back by it. And there was yellow tape up, and today when I went by, it was taken care of, it was gone. And I just wanted to thank Mike and thank the, I'm assuming it was the DPW that got right on that and took care of that. The other I wanted to mention was, I truly like the newsletters that go out in the water bills and also the newsletter that goes out with the low light and power bill. I want to say that sometimes it clarifies information and sometimes it creates confusion sometimes. And the confusion, and I want to talk just briefly about the right-of-way with the point broadband, different things that are going on in the community. And the confusion is, I'm gonna say ninety-five percent of it has all been done within the city right-of-way. There's been some instances that were done on private property such as mine, and the city worked, helped me resolve that issue. The confusion is, who's, comes from that, talking to some local residents, who's responsible when it's in the right-of-way. I know that citizens are supposed to maintain and mow it and everything, but there's just some confusion about who should be contacted and that type of situation. So at some point, I would hope that the city would clarify a little bit on that. Again, and maybe it's, I noticed it on the vaults going up and down Hudson Street. I was on the other side of the city on the east side, and it looked like a lot of those vaults have got grass growing. And maybe it's because of the time of year that the west side of the town got taking care of the boughings that were taken care of. And so maybe point broadband will be out there and take care of those. But there just seems to be, I'm just gonna clarify, I think there's some confusion that who should be taking care of it. Whether it's the citizens are supposed to, or whether it's the city, or whether it's broad, point broadband, or whoever. So with that, thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else?
Good evening. Greg Canfield, 403 North Washington Street, here about the sewer situation from 100, sorry, 96 West Main Street to 106, I believe, are the four parcels there. I wasn't satisfied with our last call around, so I'm gonna give it another shot, see how we do. See if that sells down. There's one for everybody. The first four pages are copies of the assessors' report. Those buildings date back to 1890, prior to sewer being installed in town. I'm gonna testify as an expert witness that plumbing started generally in the teens and twenties, and most homes had private disposal systems in the backyard. And then when public sewer came through, those would get rerouted out to the street. The house I live in got plumbing in 1928, and I'm not sure when Lowell got public sewer. I would guess it was probably the thirties or the forties. Who knows, maybe later than that, but those four buildings there, which comprise six to eight addresses, were all there prior to sewer coming down the street. The last time I was here, Dan, you felt that because there had never been complaints and the size of the line was six-inch, that that's what, there was no record of it ever being public? But because it wasn't eight-inch, is that the minimum size for a public sewer?
It is today, yes.
Do you know when that went into effect?
I can find out if that one's good or bad.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what, in the seventies or eighties, or? Okay. If you look at the fifth page, there's three articles circled there, the blue pens highlighted. It shows that that entire sewer main was six-inch across the bridge. It was abandoned down to the 115, 117, and 119 buildings where the Main Street Inn currently stands. And it shows a six-inch line going across to those four buildings on the south side. That's a print from the bridge reconstruction, and it was updated and increased to eight-inch in twelve years ago. So up until then, the whole main was six-inch. So if the main was six-inch, how would you get an eight-inch lateral to serve those buildings?
Say anybody need to take your slide rule to serve the building? Slides rules are eight inches, they're six inches.
Well, for a public sewer, though, that's a public sewer that serves four parcels and eight residents. You can't run eight-inch across the street and decrease it to six-inch, to a six-inch main. When that sewer was run across the bridge, it was done by the city. I understand their logic that they're trying to get traffic back open, if this is the forties or fifties, whenever it was. They chose to run one sewer main across the street to serve four parcels, eight customers. It made it a lot simpler for them to get the street back open. In doing that, they really screwed all four building owners over there, a couple of them anyways, because fortunately, it comes in directly next to the building that I own. Jack Reedy down on the end of Rook's, he has to run a hundred feet to get to the sewer main, because it is a sewer main, we're gonna be done disputing that. But he has to run a hundred feet underneath the building, and every year, his plumbing freezes and his tenant doesn't live in his apartment upstairs for four or five months. So I think it's pretty clear that it was six-inch done by the city, and how can we say that's not a main, if everything else was six-inch?
I don't have an answer for it. I mean, we can look into this and respond, but I mean, from my understanding, there's no record that those laterals going across mains the city ever maintained, ever.
Well, they wouldn't maintain them if there wasn't a problem. Usually problems happen when tree roots get in the line. There's never any trees of any size over there, other than ornamental ones. But the city put that line in there to serve four buildings. It's a main line.
I wasn't here in 1940 or whenever it was put in, so I have no idea what he's saying is true or not. I wasn't here, I don't know anybody that was. I would personally think if we were replacing the line on the north side with an eight-inch saying, public lines are eight-inch. My question is, why wasn't it run across the road at that time? It made eight-inch all the way up to the buildings. I would think if it was a sewer main, when we replaced the main on the other side, the main across the road would have been done, was what I would think would happen. But again, I wasn't here when that was done, I wasn't here when it was put in originally. I just go on speculation is what I think it could be, but I don't have any information other than what he just brought us here today, other than it came from the city there. That six-inch line shows on there is six-inch line. And other, probably have other plans around town that show six-inch lines going from mains up to buildings, both the property lines. Does it make it for some reason? I was putting the pass.
Generally, that happens when there's a single building being served. And sometimes somebody builds on a vacant lot next door, and the city has allowed people to hook into that existing main. I can give you four or five places that's happened, but these were four existing commercial buildings with eight tenants that we ran one line to. And it does show on that fifth page that we're looking at, it says sanitary sewer. That's how it's labeled. Six-inch sanitary sewer, which is what the whole bridge was.
Well, we need to figure out how we're gonna get resolution on this, because I don't think it's gonna happen right now, tonight.
Well, we're not done yet. It's gonna get worse. Turn to the next page. You'll find that nineteen years ago, the city corrected the problem across the street for three buildings. That was done twelve years ago, so we're talking 2010. And they paid McDonald Plumbing $12,500 to reroute that proper, those three buildings through the Spring Grove Variety Building.
Nineteen years ago, right?
Nineteen years ago, yeah.
This is 2000.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. My math's bad, sorry. But the city hired McDonald to do that. If you look at the invoice on the top, it says Bob, I'm assuming that's Bob Robinson, who's no longer with us, great guy. Rita Reister was in that building, and she said that without any complaints from the tenants, the city came in and corrected the problem. What they, I purchased all three of those buildings to put the Main Street in, and I was pretty surprised, because I've worked on those buildings, to go underneath there and find all brand-new sewer lines, four-inch, insulated and heat taped, and redirected through Mike Springer's property in four-inch. So we're saying that a sewer main needs to be eight inches. We did this work without permits, we ran three buildings on four-inch. And paid for, so I bet Jack Reedy would like to have his lines heat taped and insulated.
So I did confirm this with former manager Dave Pasquale. He did admit that the city did do this to correct a problem. However, he did tell me, because I asked him specifically, did the city take ownership of the line when they did this? His answer to me was no. And I could not find any documentation that shows the city took ownership.
Well, you rerouted through another building and completely changed it.
That doesn't mean it took ownership.
It wasn't done up to code.
That was before my time. I was in, I wasn't here with, I can only just tell you what I know.
But we set a precedent there when we did that.
The former manager and the former staff, nobody up here.
Oh, no, there isn't a person in the building probably that was in authority at that time, no. But, I mean, right now, we don't even wanna call us a main building across the street when it clearly is. We spent $12,500 to fix a similar problem across the street. Not, no permits were pulled or inspected, it wouldn't have passed. It was run, there was no easement ever recorded. So what happens, I mean, I guess after fifteen years, we have a prescriptive easement, so we're past that, but... I think the buildings on the south side deserve the same treatment the ones on the north side.
So you're asking us to recreate something that was done that wasn't up to code or up to, according to our own regulations by a previous administration? That's where I get confused.
Well, I mean, you guys are acting like it's all our problem, and the problem is because the main is still shallow. It's because of the roof.
My point is that, the way I'm reading this, is Dave Pasquale and his administration at that time should have said, no, this isn't up to snuff, we're not doing this. But they went ahead and did it.
Well, three-quarters of the buildings on the south side already have their buildings heat taped and insulated. I think that it needs to be reworked where it comes in so that all four don't back up at once. I'm not sure exactly how that's done under there, but I think that you need to keep responsibility for the main across the street until it gets under the building. I mean, it's pretty clear, there's plenty of evidence there. I'm hoping that we don't have to get into a legal battle or whatever. Jeez. Says right there, sanitary sewer, it was all six-inch, but it's our problem because the city didn't run a big enough line in the past. But anyways, I'll wait here for you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else?
My name's David Bongga. I live at 804 Riverside. Came in a month ago trying to talk about public crosswalks and making it a little more pedestrian-friendly. At that time, I was told that we needed to get MDOT approval to do so. I talked with the planner at MDOT, and he said that the city can pass laws to add flashing lights and make it a law to stop traffic and crosswalks. And I was hoping, I'm sorry for the kids, but I was hoping to get some more protection on Main Street. And I live right by Hudson, and traffic moves very quick on that road, and I feel like we could make some improvements on that road as well. I talked to Dan about it, and just like to see if we can move that forward.
Dan, can you follow up with your conversation regarding that?
Okay. Last week after Mr. Bongga sent me his information, I contacted the county and MDOT, and I heard back from both of them today. I talked with Nathan at the county, and he told me that they have done a couple pilot programs in other communities where they put up the push-button activated crossings. He, I think he said there was maybe two, he was really confusing to listen to, and some of his information I didn't know wasn't correct. But in the case, they did say that there is a possibility of doing that. When it comes to ordinances, the state, the state, a law states that motorists must stop for pedestrians in signalized crosswalks. A signalized crosswalk is one where there's a walk, don't walk sign, and a red light for traffic, green light for, that's a signalized crosswalk. A crosswalk with just a push button that the lights flash and say whatever it says, stop for pedestrians, that's not considered a signalized crosswalk. What ends up happening, what ends up, some communities do, is they pass an ordinance that addresses those type of things. Some communities have ordinances that talk about how far away from a bike you have to be when you pass it. Some ordinance, some communities have ordinances that they pass that say, anybody in the street has the right of way, and vehicles must stop, period. And there's other issues that come up with that, if you don't think through them all, but that was his point as well, is that, you know, City Lowell might do something. City Beta has something different, Saranac has something different, and then you go from community to community, if you're traveling, how do you know what the rules are there? Just tell me about some of Grand Rapids that I didn't know about. So just those type of things. But he did say that if this is a direction we wanna go, to contact him, and we can start the discussion on maybe doing a pilot program here, maybe? He says, depends, there's a couple things that affects us, who's paying for it? If the city wants to pay for it, they've got, they wanna look at what you're doing, the reasons behind it, and they wanna make sure it's gonna fit the area and what we're trying to do. If you want MDOT to pay for it, then they start, those same items, plus then they start looking at accidents and severity of accidents through that area, pedestrian vehicle accidents and such. Ask them, what do we have to do to get the ball rolling, is basically get back ahold of them again. But him and, there's another gentleman there named Kirwin that's also part of this process, that we could sit down and have the discussion. He wouldn't commit to anything over the phone, but other than just talk, that'd be his starting point. I also contacted the county road commission, and they informed me, Tom at the, Tom at the road commission informed me, or Tim? Tim. That at this time, Kent County does not allow those, does not have any of those push-button activated cross, flashing crosswalks. For whatever reasons they have, they don't feel that they are as safe as what people think they are, so they don't approve those. They had one community that really was adamant on doing it, so their solution to that was, is they gave the street over to that community, and then they can do what they wish. So if we want Hudson Street, they probably can give it to us, and it becomes ours to maintain and everything, and we can make our own rules on that kind of stuff. I will give one word of caution on those push-button signals. Personal experience. Last community has that, we put them in, in our downtown area. In an area where traffic, when there's people around, there's traffic around, and it's all going slow. But when it's during the day, morning time, they aren't really looking for people so much. I was out and about, walking around, the building official pushed the button, waited for the light, started doing this flashing thing, car in one direction stopped. Started walking across, car in the other direction, I don't know how they didn't see me, had a safety vest on and everything. I probably took one more step, I probably would've been hit. And it's just one of those things that, that people get this sense of safety, if you will, push the button, you have to stop for me. Not everybody in our state operates the same when it comes to motorists and pedestrian interaction, so it's something that we really would have to, I would wanna make sure we really get the education out there on what needs to be done. Because just because you push the button, doesn't make it safe.
Can I say something?
You can do whatever you want.
Mr. Bongga, I hear you, and I want you to know how frustrating MDOT. My name's Cliff Yankovic. I have a store there, we've been there twenty years, and the retailers, probably eighteen years ago, we actually collected petitions, because MDOT was blowing us off, Governor Granholm was in charge then. We collected petitions from our customers, sent them to Granholm, went over MDOT's head, it had no effect. They were pushing a cool cities initiative back then, and the second or third thing on the agenda was to be pedestrian-friendly. Actually, we had an MDOT official in this room tell us that being pedestrian-friendly did not necessarily mean being able to cross the street. And I'm serious. The other thing I want you to know about MDOT is that, was it two years ago, they wanted to raise the speed limit downtown to thirty-five? And this guy, thirty, whatever, they wanted to make it go faster. And the city manager and the chief of police had to argue with them to keep it at twenty-five. And the only reason I'm telling you that is just so you know that it's a concern in Lowell, and it's something that we've tried to make efforts in, from various entities in town. And dealing with MDOT is tough. And I'm really surprised that somebody at MDOT would just tell you, oh, they can pass a law, put up whatever they want, because we can't. We had, correct me if I'm wrong, but you had to fight to get them to let us put up the signs that we have with the pedestrians.
And they made us take down the speed signs, the, how fast you're... They made us, we had to go through their program to get the speed signs, so it's not that simple. And unfortunately, like with Hudson, that's a county road, it's not our road, so. Hudson, I feel like is different, though, because there are walk and don't walk crosswalks at the intersections and then by the air grounds. But this one, I agree, is a problem.
Oh, yeah. We have also asked MDOT to put in a regular signal here, like down at the Shell Station, so that we could have actual crosswalks and dah 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 dah. And nope, that's not gonna happen, so.
So trying to get a conversational?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Please do. We're happy to have conversations, because...
Would you like me to see if I can get MDOT to come and talk to us about a pilot program?
Yes, please.
Okay. Will do.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Old Business Number A, ordinance 2202, east of the Flat River.
Earlier this year, the city council discussed the possibility of restricting adult-use marijuana facility commercials. Adult-use marijuana commercial facilities in C-three zone properties east of the Flat River. At the time, the council appeared supportive of the idea and asked for the planning commission to review this again and to come back with any other recommendations pertaining to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the marijuana facilities. The council then informed me once this is completed, they would take this under consideration. At the April 11, 2022, planning commission meeting, they held their public meeting. With the exception of restricting marijuana faci- With the exception of restricting marijuana facilities east of the Flat River, they didn't see the need for any other changes. Members of the planning commission stated they believe the facility should not be in locations because it's primarily a residential area with only, only a few commercial facilities. Furthermore, they have done everything they can to prevent these from being in residential areas. Some members stated the facilities are best suited in the commercial and industrial areas on West Main and Bowes, where they are currently eligible. The planning commission then made a recommendation for the city council to approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance restricting marijuana facilities in C-3 zone properties east of the Flat River. Also, I had Numbler Manny Moore recommending that the planning commission's recommendation be followed and approve ordinance 22-02 as presented. Marty, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we brought it up again. We, we looked at, as Jim asked, we make sure that we get, we looked at everything. And Andy took the time. We isolated the areas out. When we put the zoning all together, we never in a million years would have thought that Methodist Church would have gave up their preschool license. And there we go. Otherwise, we could have addressed it at that time. It was brought up that when it came back to us last time around, it basically was dead on arrival. And the reasoning of that was, in the meantime, between when planning started to make the, make the recommendation and it came to us, an individual bought the property and started the process. So it kind of made sense. Since then, the individual has backed out. He couldn't make special land use, make the property meet special land use. I was asked that, would it ever? And for the life of me, I, I don't know if it could. I suppose there's always a possibility. Somebody way smarter than me could figure it out. But Bruce is here too. Bruce, if you'd like to chime in. It, it's a unique situation to where we have residential over there heavily in that area. Minus making it look like a mini Fort Knox where we put big retaining walls up and around. I don't see. Since then, we were approached by some people that were thinking about it, put no money down, no earnest, no nothing. But we're just curious. The property is now up for sale, has a for sale sign in it. I think it's just going to take a developer to buy that big piece of property and do something with it, whether it be something like an Aldi's or a strip mall or whatever. But we just felt that it's just not the, the place for it.
Are the homes around Rollaway closer than they are at Loom and Med's Cafe?
Yeah, so you've got them right across the street.
If at Loom, you have them right directly behind it, connected to that parcel. And there was one okay behind Speedway, which has houses directly across the street and to the south. And what's the first one?
Med's Cafe.
You literally hop a fence, and there's condos back there.
I can't.
It's such a, go ahead.
To say that, the biggest reason is that it's a residential area. It's just, it's not enough for me. I, I live off of Lake. I've got them all around me. They, they do not affect me or my family, or the way children get off buses or get on buses. We have apartment buildings directly behind Loom. Did we ever care to consider how those residences feel? It's just not enough for me, and I, and I think that using that as the top reason is just, it's not a good reason.
Well, I, I think what you're saying is that, that we didn't get a whole lot of protests when we were open up to Key Heights. And I mean, that's a residential. It's a different style of residential. And I just want to make sure that, that if we, we did pass this, we would give the people on that side of the river the same courtesy when they came in and wanted to protest that. I don't want that, and we'd give them the same consideration. And so therefore, I also have some reservations in regards to this.
The other thing, this is just my opinion, but I think the marijuana stores are way more regulated than Rollaway operated as a bar. They can stay open a whole lot longer. And I mean, we've put all kinds of regulations on the marijuana stores that don't apply to any alcohol selling thing in, in town. And so it, the argument doesn't make much sense to me. They have a whole lot more hoops to jump through than Rollaway ever did.
And security, and they're quieter. You think a bowling alley and a bar is quieter than a marijuana facility that has to close at nine? Wouldn't it be at Rollaway till 2:00 AM?
And if you've ever walked into any of these dispensaries, the first thing they ask you before is your idea.
Yeah.
There is no focus focus about it.
I agree.
Bruce Barker, 901 North Jefferson Street, Chair of the Planning Commission. A couple of things that I'd like to correct. Mr. Mayor, in regard to the property on West Street, which opened today, as a matter of fact, which is our sixth property now open, possibly our seventh because another one is, looks like it's opening one immediately. We have approved 11 special land leases. We have not turned down anybody outside of this one property. When we first met, three years ago, I believe it was, in this room, city council, lawyers, Williams &amp; Works, planning commission, police, everybody we could think of. And we set out the parameters, and one of the parameters was to shield the residential areas as much as possible. When we look at individual properties like Iconic, the new one opening up on West Street there, we made them go through, they went through three different meetings with us, an hour and a half each meeting, as did almost all the other ones, at minimum an hour and a half. We have set up berms. We have set up fences, trees, everything we can do to protect those residential properties. And the planning commission has usually voted seven to nothing on all of these conditions. And 23 to 30 conditions each one. You're right. We do require a lot more than normal. That's correct. Absolutely correct. But in regard to the West Street one, there is no property across the street. It is down two houses, or two, two lots away. There's a parking lot in between it, and behind it is a commercial property. So there is no commercial property, or no residential property closed. We asked them specifically to put cameras in the parking lots. We've asked them to put up fences in the back, which they did. We've asked them to put a left turn only sign so that they wouldn't be going down West Street, I believe it is, so that they would turn back to Main Street. So we, we have done that with almost every property that has come before us. Loom, we asked them to put in fences. We asked them to expand a parking lot, connect with the next door property, the parks placed there. They cannot use certain building, or certain hours of the building and things of that nature. So we did take into consideration. Every one of these 11 properties that we have approved, we have held at least one public hearing consisting of at least an hour and a half. And each one has been given 23 to 30 conditions. We have had public property. We have had input. We have done everything that we possibly can, and I think as a city, if we want to continue to grow and continue to have, not have a lawsuit, not have a lot of the other things, I think that we have done every, we have upheld everything that the city should uphold.
If you took my comments as saying that you didn't do that, I apologize. That wasn't my intention. I think you guys do a fantastic job. I'm saying that this property could also, it's not out of the realm of possibility to say that this property could also have somebody bring you a plan that meets 30 conditions. That's what I'm saying. I think you guys do a fantastic job. I didn't mean it any other way.
We've discussed that, Mr. Mayor, for an hour and a half. This is the second time. Actually, we put three and a half hours into the total discussion on this property. Probably more than that, actually. My, my, my point is, is that it was been a seven to zero vote by the planning commission, not once, but twice. And if you count the turn down, it's three times. That that property is just not suitable for marijuana under our existing ordinances. Whereas there are properties on the west side of town that certainly are, to this day. There's places for sale out there. There's other properties that can be bought. They have constructed new buildings out there. They have rehab older buildings. So there is no way that anybody can say that we have not been accommodative to the marijuana industry. We have, we have done everything that we could possibly do trying to protect the residents. And what about the residents? They have rights too on the, on the east side of town. We have residents. We have, we have rights as well. So it's not just one property that doesn't have rights. The people that are around that, that particular property or the people who will move in in the future, they have rights. And one of the rights that we talked about was protecting the residential areas of this city. So that's, that's my take on it. Jim?
Bruce, it's not just this particular piece of property. There are a couple other properties that are on the east side of the river that are not near as many residents. There are just as many as that part of it. So I, I don't want this just to be this blue building, the Rollaway thing. I want us to take consideration the other locations that are possibly could be suited for that same thing. I mean, if Kaiders was to sell that property, there's a couple homes there, not the nearest one is by the roller ring. So again, if I make that, I eliminated all possibilities.
How many parcels is it for? If you count Rollaway's two?
Yeah, you got the Driss and Rollaway.
There's five. There's five C-3 properties.
I'm not sure who the fifth one is.
There's the, the, the gas place south of the river.
Oh, okay.
There's Progressive. So there's some Kaiders. I guess you call them moos.
And again, the, the east side of Lowell is primarily residential. And if you're going to provide them with some consistency in what we're doing, I would, I would simply urge you to do what the planning commission has, has offered to you, to adopt 2202 as the, as the ordinance for Lowell. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Any other discussion?
That was the one property that during the public, we opened it up. It did draw the biggest crowd of all of the, all of the properties. I would think that down there by the automotive, the church voiced their opinion, probably second. But that one, we had a big turnout. There was a couple that were in favor, but the majority wasn't. And there you go.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion for ordinance 22-2?
I will. I'll make the motion. I agree to adopt the resolution 2202.
All supports, want to vote a vote?
Very good. Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
No.
Councilmember Salzweil?
No.
Councilmember Yankovic?
No.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
No.
All right. New business number A, sanitary sewer repairs on Bowes Road.
Could I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
Normally, I would recommend that we defeated an ordinance.
Sure.
We haven't done anything until, normally, I recommend that we have a motion and saying we are rejecting it for these reasons and have that passed. Because until we actually pass an ordinance or a motion or a resolution, we haven't taken action. Because courts have held, municipalities operate when they adopt a motion, a resolution, or an ordinance. You haven't adopted anything. You just reject it somewhere.
All right. I'll make the motion to reject ordinance 2202.
If I may.
Sure.
What, are you a lawyer or something? I'd be mindful to give the reasons as in this area is not any closer to residential neighborhoods than existing medical, existing marijuana facilities, and that marijuana facilities are as closely or more closely regulated than the commercial entities that could be located there.
I make the motion to reject ordinance 2202 for all those reasons.
And also that it encompasses, I'm going to add to your.
You do it every month.
That it encompasses eliminating the other potential three or four locations by saying nothing east of the river.
And I think that there could be an entity that brought a plan that would meet all the conditions. I think there's too much to rule it out.
I should part your motion.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say I was not meaning any of my remarks as a criticism of the planning commission because you guys have done a great job, and I'm glad I didn't have to do it.
Oh, I'm very supportive of the job the planning commission does. And I'm sorry, Bruce, if my comments didn't reflect that, because I think you guys do do a fantastic job. Any other discussion? Attorney, we're good?
I'm happy to do.
Sue Mead?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Say yes. Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
No.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Ordinance is rejected. Now, Dan, Bowes Road sanitary sewer repair.
Evening, Mayor and Council. A while back, we received a call of a possible sewer act up on Bowes Road down by Pleasant Street. We went out and found very large rocks in the sewer vein. Not sure how those ended up in the sewer vein. They were very large. Ended up cleaning the, the pipe from Pleasant to Center. And through the process of cleaning the 12-inch line, we pulled up more large rocks. And upon further investigation, we found two sections of play pipe that were damaged, damaged to the point of allowing gravel and rocks to fall into the pipe. This sewer pipe is one of our major lines through town. Everything from Main Street South and from Hudson West goes into that line, including the lift station in Lowell Township. There's a large amount of flow that comes through that, that pipe, and we're concerned that a large failure of this line could cause us some major headaches. Looking at the location on Bowes Road, being a busy street, at Wellville Street, that we prefer not to dig up if we don't have to, although we did with the water main break back long ago. We looked at fixing this, this problem with minimal disturbance by utilizing a cure to replace repair. This is the type of repair where they, they stop the flow of the pipe, clean the line out on the inside, and then insert a, a resin impregnated sleeve, if you will, into the pipe, fill it full of hot water so it activates and sets up. And then as they, as they pull out their water and everything, their plugs and everything, basically have a new piece of pipe inside the pipe, solid wall and everything. It's a, it's a process that's used quite regularly in areas that you don't want to disturb. One of the, one of the issues with that though is you have to bypass pump around the repair while this is happening. Looking at conventional repair, where you dig it up, take out a piece of pipe, we probably, because of the amount of flow, would have to bypass pump it.